Okay. I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission regular meeting of August 4th, 2024 to order. It is 7:31. It's rise and pledge, please.
Let me just... To the flag of the United States of America and to liberty, public, voice, and stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Take a roll call here, myself, I am here, Mr. Dwyer is here, Terry Grantham is absent, Debbie Jett-Harris.
Here.
Norm Peck.
Yep.
Anne Thurlo.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Denise Markovitz is not, Mr. Ginsburg is not staff, Mr. Maholland is here, Sue Spang, recording secretary. We have Ann Schicello sitting in for Roseanne Hardy, right there. Please take a note that I sat Mr. Schmidt for Mr. Grantham. Moving on to public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearing. Number one, the application of 138 Boston Post Road LLC for a special permit under section 8.2.8 Elderly Housing CA for three apartment units of elderly housing, 55-plus, 17 total units with three covered detached garage buildings and associated improvements at property located at 38, excuse me, 138 Boston Post Road, east line assessor's map, 31.1 lot 7. Mr. Peck?
Yep.
Excuse me. Mr. Peck is recusing himself from said hearing. With that, we will move on to the presentation. Please state your...
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind you which one sign was posted.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, state your name, please, if you could speak into the microphone over there for me.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Wren.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I have a question. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary.
August 4th, 2022, to the Eastline Zoning Commission from William Maholland regarding proposed elderly housing project 138 Boston Post Road. The applicant is proposing to develop an elderly housing project on property identified in the application as 138 Boston Post Road. The project will consist of two six-unit buildings and one five-unit building for a total of 17 units. It will have three accessory garage structures for motor vehicles. The lot size is 1.86 acres in area. The use is permitted by special permits subject to 25.5 table of minimum controls, section 24 site plan, and section 22 parking. Section 25.5 provides specific criteria for development. There are 14 requirements that list design standards, including the age restriction for occupancy of the project. These requirements provide for density parking setbacks, floor area buffers, and others. The project has been reviewed by the town land use team, which consists of the town engineer, water and sewer engineer, town planner, fire marshal, and building inspector, as well as myself, the zoning official. The staff had numerous comments and concerns which were addressed by the project engineer. The property is currently occupied by an existing single-family dwelling. This dwelling unit will eventually be incorporated into the development as an age-restricted unit. This approach allows us to save the dwelling, which has some historical significance. The applicant is here and will give a presentation addressing the site plan, architectural design, and other details of the development.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Sorry about that, my bad, go ahead.
No problem at all. Again, for the record, my name is Joe Wren, professional engineer of Indigo in Old St. Crook. Also with us tonight, we have Peter Springsteele, a project architect, Jimmy Cordo, who's the owner of the property and the applicant, and John Cunningham, who's the project landscape architect. As Bill mentioned earlier, we did put up the sign. It's still there today, was there more days than the minimum required by the regulation? As Bill also mentioned, we did have a few staff meetings with the utilities engineer, with town engineer, with Bill, before this project even got off the ground and during, and recently, just to resolve any comments that they did have. And as of this meeting, as far as I'm aware and what Bill had said in his letter, all of their comments are addressed, and there is nothing outstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Maholland.
The, I decided to put the board over there because I can see it, and then I think you all can see it good. I do have a pointer, if that's okay, rather than me trying to reach around the board and knock it over a few times. So as Bill mentioned, the existing condition, the location is right between the New Dollar General on Boston Post Road, not West Main Street. There is an existing Victorian house. The site is almost right across from one of the main entrances over to the high school, to that area, if you're familiar. There's an existing Victorian house right in this location that will remain, and it will remain unchanged. It's currently, has its own service connections to power, to water, to sewer. There's also a, an old barn, garage, right in this location that will also stay without much modification, other than creating a second-floor small office space, maximum of 500 square feet, on the second floor of that, of that building, generally for the property manager.
You're going to create a second floor?
Is there a second floor? The second floor already in there?
Yes.
And that's part of the architectural plan as well, right?
Yes.
There's architectural plans on the record for that barn as well.
Excuse me, so that would be the office for the property manager, is that correct?
Could be, but not limited to.
Well, my question is, is it an apartment, or is it a...
It is not an apartment, it has no kitchen, it's just a half bathroom.
It's definitely not a living space. Again, there's no laundry, there's no kitchen. The three proposed buildings are these three darker buildings here, on the west side, north is to the left, as you can see the north arrow in the upper right corner. So there's a building there, a building in the center, and a building on the end. Six units for the two end buildings, you can see they're slightly different shape, and the one in the center is one unit less, it's five units, for a total of 17 units. All units have two bedrooms, and it's all age-restricted, which is allowed by special permit in the CA zone, so 55 and older. Also as part of the plan, and Peter will show you the architecture of these, but there are three detached garages. You can see they're directly across the entrance drive and centered on the building, so we have six units under garage, five, and then six, one each for each unit, and then we also have additional parking there.
Excuse me, can I just ask you, you can just point the pointer, you don't have to wiggle it?
Okay.
Please?
Sure. Yep, I can do that, none of that.
None of that.
If there's multiple areas, I kind of go to each one, but I'll point at once, sure. The butters to the property here, we have Dollar General, I think I went through this already, and then the cemetery association is here and in the back as well. So to the south and to the west is the cemetery, northwest is Dollar General, to the east, on the east side, we have Faylor Apartments, and then there's another commercial building in the northeast corner as well. Everything proposed, there's no septic systems here, it's all served by public water and public sewer, hence why we were meeting with the utilities engineer. The entrance drive is paved, it's 22 feet wide, begins at the street, and then ends at a fire apparatus turnaround at the end, which was, which we've used in this town before for turning of fire apparatus, and it's 120 feet in length, so a fire apparatus could turn in one way, back up fully, and pull out of the site forward without having to reverse, since we're more than 150 feet deep into the site there. For the trash removal, we do have one dumpster, and it's located on the end near that turnaround area. There's still enough space, we widened that area, so there's enough space for the turnaround, but the dumpster is in the corner there. All the trash will be brought down from the apartments on or before trash day, and then collected there. All of that is not using town services, all of this, the utilities, the driveway, the trash is all privately maintained, and no, will not be using any town services.
So now, is it, excuse me, is the dumpster like fenced in or anything like that, like on a concrete pad?
There is a, it's on the asphalt, but there is an enclosure around it, there is a detail in the plans for that enclosure. For the mail, right up by the barn, right in that area, if you look closely to the plan, there's a mail kiosk. There is a small parking area right next to that mail kiosk, and an aisle which crosses the street to a sidewalk, so you can safely walk down the sidewalk in front of the units, across the street, and acrosswalk to that mail kiosk, or park your car and get your mail and leave, or enter the site at the same time. For the drainage and the stormwater, everything essentially pitches from the road from the north to the south. It's a, the total property area is 1.86 acres, so a little bit under two, of course. All of the impervious from the road, from the garage structures, and from the apartment buildings, all is collected in a storm collection system. All of it goes downhill, and right in this area, if you look closely on the utilities and grading plan, you'll see that there's a large underground infiltration system. We have beautiful sand and gravel soils with very high permeability rates, very similar to what we did with that Dollar General next door. Everything drains to a stormwater collection system, all of it goes underground, there is no outlet or discharge off this site at all, it all goes into the ground. We've monitored the site, especially after Hurricane Ida last fall, we monitored the Dollar General site, and there is no overflow, no inundation, it's working as, as designed, and we expect the same on this site as well. There are several water quality features, or low-impact development features in here. We have some gravel aprons to promote infiltration, we have some curbless on the east side, we have some curbless areas, overland flow, all the catch basins have sumps, the last catch basins before, the last catch basin here, before it goes into the infiltration system, has a deeper sump of four feet with an outlet hood to trap all the oils and floatables before it goes into the, into the ground. We are an aquifer area here, so those controls were looked at more closely by the town engineer, including an operation and maintenance manual that we prepared with snow removal and de-icing, with the caveat in there, the requirement that no salt can be used for de-icing, magnesium chloride, we have the record copy there that Bill just showed to you, but that is a requirement in there, not only magnesium chloride can be used and no salt, because of the aquifer area.
And you're going to make sure that happens every year?
That is in the O&amp;M manual, which is part of this application, so it's enforceable. Mr. Cordo is the property owner, these are proposed to be apartments, not condominiums, so they will be rented, so he will be the owner, and he will be responsible to implement that. As part of that O&amp;M manual, there's maintenance of the roadways, of the sidewalks, for snow removal, and just general maintenance and repair, all the site landscaping, everything's listed in there, all the items, and he would be responsible for all of that. Some of the, over in this area on the west side, we originally had proposed a retaining wall along that west side. The site is generally flat, it's almost even elevation from the north to the south, but right about, right at this location here, there's a low spot where the runoff would collect now, and potentially in a very large storm, go to, toward the west, towards the cemetery property. The site is, again, underlying soils are very well drained, so there's really very limited site runoff, but that's the way the topography goes, from the north to the south to that area, and then off to the west. We're collecting nearly the entire site, definitely all the impervious area, and putting it into the ground for infiltration. But in this area here, Jim had some discussions with the cemetery association, and they actually pervert, preferred grading in that area versus a retaining wall. So we removed the retaining wall on this latest set here, and we have grading. So this area, this trapezoid area on the plan, is a temporary grading easement, which has been vetted out with the cemetery association. He has a signed letter from them, saying that they reviewed the plan, and they find this acceptable. Bob Fanner, local surveyor, is on cemetery association board, he provided the grading that they would like, and the easement that they would like, and we've incorporated it into the plans. So it'd be a temporary easement, so during construction, the owner can build that area and grade it and seed it, topsoil and seed it and mulch it, that's what they've asked for. There's currently a low area, like a depression, so it solves a problem that they've had over some years as well, by adding that fill in that area. The slope is very flat, it's 10 to 1, it's not a 2 to 1 slope, but that would be very difficult to mow, it's a very flat, 10 to 1 slope, so it can be maintained as well.
Excuse me, Joe, I'm going to assume the landscape architect is going to go over the buffer things in that area?
Yes.
The cemetery from the development?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions in terms of temporary, is it going to be a temporary buffer as well, or just grade it off until you're...
Nope, just a temporary easement, so that it can be constructed and filled. The grass will be initiated by the owner, and then eventually it will be taken over. Once the temporary easement, if it's a year and a half or two years, whatever the duration is, it will be completely taken over for maintenance by the cemetery association.
Do we still need to meet the buffer requirement, so we'll discuss that later?
Yeah, John Cunningham, our landscape architect, is here, after me, we'll go over the buildings and then the landscaping as well. And I promise, I'm the, I'm the longest one. Let's see, traffic and sightline, so we have 17 units, it's in a commercial area, there's no traffic report that's required. We have an arterial road, Boston Post Road, US Route 1, it's very wide, and there's plenty of sightline, you can see all the way down to the traffic light at the four corners. There is a curve looking to the west, but even at the Dollar General site, with leaps and bounds, we're able to meet the sightline looking to the left. This site is one site further to the east, so it even has a better sightline than the Dollar General did. We have sightline plans as part of this set, if you were able to look through the plans, that shows that we meet all the, we exceed the minimum requirements that DOT has. We also provided in the plan set, turning radiuses in and out of the site, so for an SU-30 vehicle, like a delivery truck or a garbage vehicle, and also fire apparatus in and out of the site. So the, the radii at the intersection right there on both sides were designed to accommodate those in and out, not only out of the site, but also into the site as well. So we have that, and then again, we have the turning at the end. For lighting, we provided information, we provided cut sheets on lighting, we provided details on these plans. On the utility and grading plan, we identify all the locations for the lights. There are a few, there are four different types of lights on the plans, there are some that are labeled A, and then B, C, and D. All the A ones, there are four pole-mounted lights on 15-foot poles, and they all have house-site shields. B are wall-mounted lights, these are just decorative features. The wall-mounted lights are the only non-dark-skies light fixture, they are 11 watts, so very low, it's just more of a, an ambiance, kind of uplighting fixture that's proposed. There are 34 of those, so each unit has two of them. There are four gooseneck fixtures that are fully dark-sky compliant, those are on the three garage buildings and the, on the barn as well, again, the details you have for that. And then there are two bollard lights, and one bollard light is by the little community patio there, and then right across the street near the mail kiosk, there's another bollard light, so two of those, and again, very low wattage for those and the wall-mounted fixtures. I do have copies of an updated lighting plan, and the only thing that changed here, I'm going to flip the sheets, I have copies for you, it's essentially the same lighting plan.
Thank you.
You know, just show you the one minor difference, hence the reason for me providing those copies. We provided a photo, provided a photometric plan for you, showing no light trespass off of the property. On the center building here, there were no rear porch lights on the original photometric plan that we provided to you, so those were added, very similar to the buildings next to them, it doesn't add any light trespass, just to be complete, we added those for those five units. There were 29 originally proposed, now there are 34 because of those five additional ones. There's also a fence along that west side as well, there is no light trespass. If you look at the photometrics plan, you'll see zeros at the property line all the way around. And we provided cut sheets for those light fixtures to you, and they're also incorporated into that plan set, plan set and the detail sheets. With that, unless you have any questions related to the site, I'll turn it over to Peter Springsteele to show you the beautiful buildings, and then after that, again, the landscaping.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Wren?
I'll wait till the end, isn't it?
Yeah, we'll pretty much hold off, please, Mr. Wren.
Okay, you're welcome.
You just need some practice, Joe.
Yeah, I'm nervous with that thing, I might shine it for somebody running. Good evening, Peter Springsteele, architect licensed in the state of Connecticut, out of Mystic, Connecticut. Essentially, we have three buildings, as explained, it's a total of 17 units. The buildings are New England-style, two-story structures. This is a typical layout of one of the buildings, there, there are actually two different kinds of buildings, two have six units, and the center one has five units. On these end buildings, the bigger ones, there are two, two types of units within these buildings. They're essentially just two-story townhouses in the center, with all the living areas on the first floor, and bedrooms on the second floor. On the end units, in order to break down the architecture, we've essentially got a one-and-a-half story unit, whereby we have a first-floor master bedroom, and then we have a second bedroom up on the second floor, built into the roofline, and that helps to bring down the building as you come towards the ends. Those end units also serve as the accessible units, I believe we have two accessible units, and they're aligned in the first building as you come down from the street, the first building on the right, and Joe's got his accessible parking spaces in that area as well. And then this is the second floor of those, of the same building, whereby you can see we have one bedroom upstairs on the end units, and the two bedrooms upstairs in the center units. This sheet is showing you the architecture of the six-unit building, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, so you can see here again, the four units in the center that are the full two-story. The end units break down, that second floor is built into a roofline, right there. Again, New England-style architecture with little portico porches on the front of the building, lots of gables, double-hung windows, six-over-one lights, simulated divided lights, we have a board and batten siding up in the gables to create some real interest in material choices here, and then we have a clapboard siding down in the lower level, here.
Like cement siding, or not vinyl, right?
I believe we've called out for, it's a product called Gentec clapboard, it's a composite material, it's not vinyl siding, it'll feel like a clapboard, it'll look like a real clapboard. It, I think it comes in a color, you pick the color, is that correct?
Yeah, it's...
No, I believe Gentec is vinyl.
It is vinyl, I'm sorry.
I believe so, yes.
It's a solid, it's a heavy vinyl.
Uh, yes.
But it's not your average vinyl siding is, my point, though, so it's not, it's not like the double four or something like that, so we're talking individual state or colored panels?
Yes.
Yes, but it's, it's not cement such, you know, party board, cement board, just to be clear.
And it's, the board and batten is the same product line? Okay. As of right now, that's the color combination we're proposing.
The trim color of the windows, I assume black?
Those are black windows, and I believe Jimmy, you're going with black windows?
Yes, Gentec.
Yes.
My view is, what you present is what you have to build, so that's important on the colors and the style. I have some experience with some folks of the time, after getting a little hair changed and trying to change the designs, and so I probably, yes, uh, but, so I want to ensure that we're all aware of that, because my view is the best way to show this commission, that's what you're all going to be doing.
We reviewed the colors at length to avoid that.
Would you like to stand up?
Sorry?
If you want to, if you could just do us a favor, I mean, if you want to make some more comments, if you could just stand up to the microphone, so that we get it on record, okay? Thank you. Carry on.
In this sheet here, we have another elevation, this is of the rear of the buildings, they're a little less ornate, they face the cemetery and the multifamily building on either side of us, not really visible from the public way. We also have the image of the garages here, these are fully enclosed garages with doors on them, and they sort of reflect the architecture of the building, same kind of material choices and fenestration. This is just a plan of the five, of the five-unit building where it's all townhouses. This is the front elevation of the five-unit building, it doesn't have those end units that break down at the corners, but this building is placed in the center, so there is some relief on the next building here coming down, and the same thing on the other side, with that building climbing up to the elevation, to the higher elevation. There's just some color of the garage, and then we...
If you, if you're in the building...
Yes.
...I'm seeing the outdoor patio area, outdoor...
Yeah, I'll let maybe the landscape architect talk about that in a little bit, but there are... Yes, there are screens, screen walls between the outdoor spaces on the rear of the units. 3D images of what this assembly of buildings will look like. We are choosing darker colors for the center building, and a little bit lighter colors for the outer buildings. We have a lot of whites in the upper areas of the building to lighten it up, and a lot of white trim, and black windows, as Bill mentioned. There is a, and the landscape architect will go through this, there is a sidewalk that runs the length of the buildings, with a green area either side of it. And because this project is so long, it's very hard to get it all into one image, that last one was just two of the buildings, here we have the whole thing, the Victorian houses up here, we didn't model that, so I don't have that, but you can see the relationship now of all the buildings. And that's pretty much it, happy to take any questions you might have.
I just have a question about the Victorian house, do you have any specs on, to what the future of that is going to look like?
As of this application, that building's not changing in any way, I believe, is that correct?
And, and as far as the color choices that you picked, do you know what color choices, I, maybe I'm asking the wrong person, so I'm sorry if I am, should I be asking this to him, Terry, or the other gentleman?
Yeah, the colors are called out on the plans. So in your, in your drawing set on the elevations, the colors for the product are called out.
My plans are eight by 10.
I believe it's white.
Could you just do me a favor and read those out for me, please, because...
The colors?
Yes, please. Oh, here we go.
Gray and white.
Chesapeake wicker.
Gentec board batten in white and gray.
There's, the clapboard siding is a Chesapeake wicker.
Yeah, but that other color there, I mean, we're seeing it from a distance, it looks more like a tan, you could have been a gray, yes.
This color here.
Yeah, is that gray, going to be gray?
That's called Chesapeake wicker, so it's kind of a tan color.
Okay, so you're going to have a mixture of gray, white, and wicker?
That's correct.
Black windows.
And black windows?
That's correct.
Will there be any stone or brick anywhere or?
No.
I'm just hoping it doesn't, I know they're just sketches. It looks a little bit like a warehouse from the sketch, but are there any details that'll make it, add some charm or?
Well, are you looking at the rear elevation or the front elevation? I guess the warehouse.
Are the columns round or are they square or?
The columns are probably square. Square is my thing.
I mean, so it's my understanding that some of these materials are liable to change? Is that what I heard you say? They're not definite per se?
No, they're definite. They're on the drawings, they're definite. If for some reason we want to change, I guess we have to come back here to get them changed.
Which we're working on, yes.
Earlier in my performance, my view has and continues to be, the presentation before this report, they showed us a little bit of a spot there. And we've had that, some attempts over time. As you're seeing typically, architects like size in the back are not as organized as these. So we're going to develop, because this year's the best visibility to it from the public way as Peter noted. And I think he's doing the same thing here and putting all the efforts and all the expensive materials in front. Obviously, they want them to be people to live there, so they're going to attempt to do a very good job so that they'll be marketable.
Maybe part of it is we're not seeing any like bushes or greenery in front.
Is that they charge it?
Well, we're going to hear from the landscape architect as it is anyway. Yeah, he can go over that, right? So my question just regarding the siding is, this Gentec, I am unfamiliar with it. I mean, is it a snap unlock system or is it like a clapboard itself to where it's vinyl versus PVC or?
I have not used the product.
Nor have I.
Owner has picked out the product. I don't know, Jimmy, if you know anything more about it.
Is there any information on this product? The only reason why I ask this is because these being apartments, I mean apartment buildings, you know, I am familiar with and, you know, people like this is not my house, I really don't care. So if there's damage, is this product easily replaceable, you may say? And it being a colored product such as a vinyl product, are you going to buy extra if there is situations like that? Is it, will it always be available?
I can't answer that question.
That's my disconcern. Please do.
I have it on my house, actually.
It doesn't look restful. It looks like a motel.
I have that type of siding on...
Debbie, you have Gentec?
I do, yes. And is it textured?
Yes.
Okay, because when it's textured, it does make a difference.
Yes.
It looks, the texture does look better.
Yes, and to answer your question about the, you know...
Say your name.
My name is James Coro. I'm the applicant and managing partner of this LLC. In terms of having backup supply, yes, we would have some, it'll probably be in that barn, to be honest.
Well, you understand what I mean, correct?
I totally understand what you mean and we don't want to have, I live in Old Line. I drive by this all the time, probably twice a day. Having a hole somewhere for more than, I don't know, whatever time it takes to get it fixed is not something that tenants are going to put up with and I, I don't want it looking that way. So I hope that answers your question. I can't rent them if...
I'm just, I mean, I've never worked with the, I mean, I'm in the trades, obviously, I'm sure you can tell that. Is it a snap unlock or the individual pieces?
No, this is like a two, the term is escaping me, but it's like a two-row type system. Normal vinyl, double-layer with insulation in it, you know, not hardyboard, not cement. We went back and forth on the product because of, we wanted a dark color that comes in board and batten specifically for the barn and we liked the color that came for the, in that vertical application for the barn. Could we change to a different similar or same product? I mean, that's, that gives you the same color. We probably could and I don't know if we're limited to a manufacturer, you know, given this presentation. So the manufacturer, specifically Gentec, what is this called? Just generic Gentec clapboard. We picked that based on the color, so.
Careful. You've got to be careful.
No, but we also want something that like Mr. Friar said, we want something that looks homey and something that looks nice. I mean, we, you know, that's, that's a heavily congested area and there's, you know, we, it's really the second only fifty-five-plus unit that we have in East Line, right? Is that, am I right, Terry?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there's like, this will be like the fourth one, correct?
There's, basically, there's numerous.
Most of those are somehow income-restricted that I know of. Some are single-family, some are income-restricted. This is not income-restricted, it's age-restricted fifty-five and over. It is market rate, yes, sir. Yep.
What style fence are you using?
In the, what is that, the?
The landscape.
West border?
The landscape architect will go with it.
Yeah, it'd be better serves, hearing that from him.
Where are the AC and condensers going?
Those are going on the rear...
Landscape will cover that.
Next to the rear patios, yep.
All right, so I think, let's, let's hear the rest of the presentation and then we can throw out all the, all the questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have some information on that Gentec siding, I'll need to...
Once we're all through here there, excuse me, once we are all through with the hearing, I can ask you. Thank you.
Just one sheet. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is John Cunningham. I'm landscape architect and the owner of TEC Landscape Design Incorporated. I'd also like to thank you for your time here tonight. Thirty-five-year member of the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission and the Design Review Board, twenty-year member of the Guilford Design Review Board. So I know what these board meetings are like. I'll try to be, I'll try to be fairly quick, okay? The site Joe has gone over, I'll go through a couple of the things that we haven't touched on yet, okay? Coming in from Boston Post Road, this is an existing side or this will be a new sidewalk out on Boston Post Road. We are proposing a sidewalk that comes all the way down the length of the units to the end. As Joe pointed out, we're going to have a mail kiosk here at my finger is, okay? We also have a community seating area that's across the roadway that people could sit, read their mail once they get it. We figured this was a good area between the existing Victorian house that's there and the new construction out back. On my plan, the larger the circle, the larger the tree would be at maturity. Most circles on a plan like this are shown at fifteen to twenty years from, when the plant is installed, okay? The plant list that's listed here, I apologize, I just noticed tonight, I was missing one variety. I can put it back on the new plate. For my finger is, this is Juniper robusta. It's a form of juniper that only gets to about twelve feet tall. So we have privacy from this to the new units, but it's not an evergreen tree. I forgot to list it here. I'll make sure I correct that.
Please do.
The rest of our plant material is native, okay? I won't go through every variety. On the east side, on the east perimeter, we have red maple moving down along the garages. So they're the same variety and then the same variety out front. The darker green circle is red cedar. That's Juniper virginiana. It's probably the, one of the best evergreen trees you can use. It sounds weird, slow rate of growth. That means it stays in place. Gets to about twenty, twenty-five, maybe thirty feet tall, poor sight tolerant, dry sight tolerant, native. It's a terrific plant. I use it all the time, okay? Along with the red cedar, I scattered in winter berry. That's Alex fatisalata, okay? Once again, another native plant. It's, it's a bird, it's a bird feeder, meaning winter, the birds will like that fruit that develops. So we're, I try to think of all those different things when we lay the plant material down. So a very natural setting along the east side. On the west side on the perimeter, there is a six-foot-high fence that runs along the property line, okay? We proposed white cedar, okay? White cedar is wood, it's not white. It's going to silver. I think that's the best look here. I wouldn't, I never suggest painting or staining or preserving the wood, just let it silver, okay? Six-foot high, we might decide, we haven't really had a conversation, are we going to be a solid six-foot-high fence or are we going to be five-feet solid with a foot topper? We can let you know. And by a foot topper, it could be a picket or it could be a lattice if we thought that was a better look for the area, okay? Just my first go-around, I think that probably the fence on the property line might be six-foot solid, probably tunning groove. But in between the units, someone had a question on the, on the unit patios, okay? Each of the units is going to have a little patio. That's these little squares behind them, okay? I'm on probably a dozen different multifamily housing units right now. The one thing that I've learned, next year will be forty years in business, is that even if you're living next door to your best friend, you would still like to have some privacy. So there is a section of fence that's going to run between and have a little T on the end. That's going to allow Unit A and Unit B to have privacy if they're sitting out there. If they want to walk around to Unit B, they walk around the fence and say hello to the other side. In this back area is going to, are going to be the air conditioning units, the heating units. Something fell off the thing, but. So the utilities are going to be located behind here. That dark green that you see on my plan is a planting bed, okay? It's going to have low shrubs. So nothing, you remember, you remember Peter's section on what the front of the units are going to look like? Nothing proposed here is ever going to get up past the bottom of the window. So this really is going to be a very nice green screen at the base of the units. The rear of the units, probably going to be more perennial ground cover. And a lot of times on projects like this, these individual garden areas, most clients, I'm going to guess Jimmy's included in that, usually leave the, the clients if they want to add something. Like if we, if we do it initially in this area, but the person that moves in here really wants to have some lavender, I usually try to leave an area where they can add anything that they want to add to the area.
But that's all behind the fence though?
No, the fence comes perpendicular from the building.
I'm driving down a highway. What I...
Oh, you're never going to see it. You know, but, but I just think that from a, from a project standpoint, it's nice to be able to allow the clients that are moving in there.
To have their own little plan.
Yeah, absolutely correct. Even though these are going to be rental units, there could be people living in these for five to ten years, they might want to add their own personal touch.
Hopefully.
Which I think is a nice idea, okay? The rest of the project, here's the existing house. We've added a patio behind there. That would be the same type of situation as here. You can see that we've added screening here, so there's two different areas here. Joe mentioned the dumpster unit is down at the end. I myself, I would probably screen that. I apologize, I usually bring it with me. I like a white cedar screen if we're going to use that on the property, so it's the same material. From a construction standpoint, usually I put a large six-to-eight-inch concrete steel cylinder in the ground that holds the wood. That way, when the trucks, if they do back into something, they're not breaking a wood beam. And we can give you a sample of that. I pulled it out of my office, I forgot to put it in my booklet.
I have seen that happen.
Yeah, yeah. I would think that any type of trash or dumpster unit should be enclosed with something, okay? The one thing that I, I haven't shown, which we can gladly do, is there, here is the six-foot-high fence that leads down here. Joe described is going to be a very light gray coming back on the cemetery. You know, we'd probably like to meet with the cemetery board to find out what they want to use. Do they want to use a shade tree? Do they want some evergreen trees? If you left it to my office, I would probably use a combination of both. Once again, native, okay?
I can shed light on that after.
Yeah, okay. And we can, I can always add it to the plans, bring that back to the town later on. I don't really think there's anything else that... I didn't do a lot there.
Our code calls for an evergreen tree of ten feet or a fence should be...
Okay.
Mr. Mahal, can you speak up for me, please?
I'm speaking to the buffer. I want to make sure I'm reading trees, I would do fencing required in code book in Section 24.163. And I want to make sure we've covered that and that you're aware of what you choose to vote on. Should you approve it, I want to make sure I know what we're going to get.
I returned the six-foot fence at the end. If the board would like to have this continued for the length of the property, that's probably not a problem. I continued the same winter berry around the corner. I didn't continue the same juniper. There's not quite enough room here. It's not real wide. So the dimension of planting areas is what's going to decide what type of material you can use. We can discuss it as a team if you wanted to tonight. I'm sure we can take this fence line and bring this back up here, which would serve as a privacy thing for the, you know, see different properties.
I just want to make sure that we have the areas which are supposed to be ten-foot center for evergreens. Concerned about the east side, which includes the apartments.
Hmm?
Make sure we have a screen there. And of course, your tenants aren't going along, they don't want some privacy from the inside.
Mr. Mahal, what is that property behind there, the area we're talking about right now? We're just trying to...
This is up here, right?
Nope.
No.
On the rear.
Right there. Cemetery.
Cemetery still. So maybe when you stand away, you can...
So that is all still the cemetery?
Yeah.
Then I would definitely would like to see the fence, most definitely.
I, I'm just going to, I'm just going to point this out. I think a random setting of evergreen trees in this particular situation is going to look a lot better than trees on ten-foot or twelve-foot or eight-foot centers. I think you want to bring some naturalistic design to this. So most of my plans are a natural setting, which all this area along the property is. There might be the same amount of trees, but you can see my on-center spacing in some areas might be eight feet, in some areas might be twenty feet. I thought the back of these garages, which are good-looking, did not really have to be shielded with evergreen material. That's why I kind of broke it up the way I did, okay?
Do you often use mix-and-match fences and evergreens or is there a section of fence and some...
You can. Fencing to me always has to have a return for, for structure. So I never run a straight section of fence without a return. So here, there's a return right here at this corner. There's a return down here, which is now going to extend back up in here. If the board really wanted to have some fencing back behind there, we could gladly add it. Do I think it's a necessity? No, I think the green element back here, I don't think the property has to be entirely fenced in. I think the use of plant material, especially deciduous and evergreen material, native material, would be a much better look both from, from this development and for the people that are on this side over, over there also.
So I just have a question.
Yeah.
I'm sure you just answered it, but I just want to be clear.
That's all right.
So the piece on the east side there, on the right?
Yeah.
That whole stretch there, it faces a cemetery.
I believe it's cemetery, right?
Right?
That's the south side.
South side.
It's on the other side.
Okay.
The east side is up here. The east side is up here.
Okay, so what do you...
Wood is up there.
Yeah.
I think it's apartment buildings.
That's the failer?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So what part of this is facing the cemetery? Is what I need to know.
This piece, and the back piece.
Okay, and so what's the proposed part to go on the back piece, is my question?
Here.
Yes.
We've, I've shown some winterberry, but we can gladly take the same style of fencing that runs down the, oh, the east wall.
The west.
The west wall, thank you, Joe, and turn it up along the east wall. So...
South wall.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahal, do we know failer apartments have some sort of fencing up there?
I don't often, I don't recall, I don't think they have anything. That's why I ask those kind of questions. Different type of housing. I'm just trying to make sure that the board understands what they're approving. We know the code says, and we know what you're doing, and obviously, all looking for the best product. I wanna make sure you understand what ideas you are looking at and what we're going for site plan, for some of this.
Hey, there is no fence for failer. There are some trees, and we have a clearing limit along that side, too, so there is some mature vegetated buffer in there that we'll be clearing up along our property line, too, that will be that left on their property on that side.
And I think with 30, junipers, virginia, red cedar, I think that's a very good buffer. That's gonna soften between the two. And I will come back with the addition of robust juniper, not listed.
I appreciate getting that much done on a crummy piece of property.
On that fantastic piece of property.
But the house, it doesn't look appealing. I don't know what to do with it, but I look at it, it gets blah.
And that is the problem with Dr. Texas's subjective judgments.
Okay, let me add, are you all set with your presentation?
No, I was gonna answer Mr. Dwyer's question, okay? Do remember this. I myself, I think the buildings look fine, okay? They are gonna, there are gonna, there's gonna be a green element in front of them, Mr. Dwyer. This is Boston Post Road.
Yeah, that's it.
There's a, I believe it's a 30-foot buffer planting that runs along Boston Post Road. So if you were driving on Boston Post Road, you're gonna be hard-pressed to see even the first unit.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm just gonna guess, no one's gonna be driving down here unless they really live in the unit, or it's a guest of one of the people that live there. Does that answer, that help you out at all?
My complaint, it's not enough to say, vote no. It's just an observation.
Yeah, I think it is just trying to make a point in terms of the design of the building.
Are there any other questions?
There's nothing appealing about this. Nothing.
Yes.
And I have a concern with residents who are gonna be living there. They're not gonna wanna look at the cemetery. I wouldn't wanna see the cemetery if I was living there.
Well, there is a six-foot-high fence behind them.
So that, okay, so then...
The fence runs all along this line.
Second story, you want to say on the first floor.
Okay.
When you're sitting out on your, when you're sitting out on your rear terrace here, you'll be looking at a fence, and probably, I'm guessing in this area, probably some new planting that is back on the cemetery.
Yeah, and the only reason why I brought up the fence is on the east side, backside there. So, thank you. Is because of like, you know, now that there is a development that is posed for there, to prevent people from, you know, just going out there, smoking their cigarettes, flicking their butts, and so it's more out of respect, I would think, for the property than anything, so.
I feel that way, too, because that way, people can't cut through. They might try to cut through, and I'm sure people aren't gonna wanna have, if you have a fence there, then people cannot cut through there, and I think that that's important.
Yeah, and I know that you call it elderly housing, being 55 and over, but to me, being 55, I consider myself elderly.
Yeah, I resemble every mark.
I think it's interesting, because elderly people are usually looking for a rent-style house with no stairs.
Yeah, is there an elevator?
That's a major district that I think is...
I don't believe it's any.
Is there an elevator in these buildings?
No.
Okay, let me ask you this. Is your presentation all set? Do you wanna go back and address some things, like the Gentex siding, Mr. Ren?
Yes, we do. I just wanted to...
Please step up to the microphone for me.
Yes, again, Joe Ren, for the record, I just wanted to clarify to Debbie's point. So this side, the west side and the south side does abut the cemetery. On the west side, this is a big open field behind Dollar General. There are no grave sites there as of today. So I know your concern was if someone's sitting here, you weren't thinking about the fence, but if they're sitting on their back patio, you just didn't want to be looking out at the gravestones. So even if the fence wasn't there, and cemetery, president of Cemetery Association is here as well, but as of today, there are no grave sites in that area. There could be in the future, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, but there are not right now.
Also, this is just a temporary easement to where, you know, you're gonna have to put in the permanent buffer in your discussions with the Cemetery Association.
They...
That trees are possible, or plantings are possible?
Their, yeah, their request is just to topsoil and seed it for grass.
Right, now, correct.
So they can mow it, and there's nothing major in the way if they ever have to expand into that area, and to fill in that depression that's on their property now. James Cordle wants to come back up and say a few things, and I think we'll be done.
Joe?
Regarding the cemetery specifically, right here, this proposed grading, which is on the site plan that you have, we've discussed it at length with, we visited the site with members of the board. We've been going back and forth with email, on the phone, with Bob, an engineer who is on the board. They've agreed to this, you know, temporary grading easement to eliminate the visual impact of a six-foot retaining wall, which benefits us both, to be frank. Behind our fence here, we've talked about in our working towards wording of additional evergreen plantings on our shared border, from the Dollar General running all the way back to this rear corner. They've provided a letter to indicate the same, that we're on the same page, literally. It's a one-page letter, and that we're moving towards that goal. We haven't recorded anything, but that's our next step, to get that temporary greeting, temporary grading easement finalized, so we're able to do that work. Is there any other questions, though? I'd be happy to, now is the time.
I have one que, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just have one question. Are you going to provide any kind of electrical outlet for people to charge a car up with, anywhere?
Is it on the...
Yeah, we discussed that at length.
That is a really good question.
Yes, so we went back and forth. Our main question was, do we have the charging stations in the garages, or in the surface parking? And we never got past that. We intend to provide them, because as you can, as you've probably noticed, more and more people will have electric cars, whether people like it or not. So we're figuring out, okay, do we put one in each garage bay, or one in each garage? Not 17 of them, but maybe two, 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 and then two on the surface.
Like a couple common areas with availability.
Yes, yeah. And it's hard to say, because the garage spaces are assigned as people move in. They're not linear across, because as people move in and out, it wouldn't make sense to keep that arrangement. But yes, we will have them.
Okay.
We don't know where they'll be located yet.
Okay, thank you.
The one challenging thing with that, Joe Ren, again, for the record, when we initially talked about it, is how do you meter them? How do you separately meter them? Each person in their unit has their own meter, but then in the garages, that would be on an owner's meter, generally. So owner probably doesn't wanna be paying for all the power to charge cars, so how do you separately meter that and then charge it to that tenant? So that's a little bit...
So if you do have an electric car, you'd be charged an additional fee per month, depending on...
Do wonders, right?
Electricity's included in the rent?
Uh, no.
Well, 'cause if it's not, then they can buy an adapter to put in their garage to plug their own car rent.
No, because the garage...
Garages are separately, they'll be, the garage will be on an owner's meter, separate from the units, because they're across the street.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So that would just be a, you have an electric car, your rent is now $100 more, whatever it is, 500 more, I don't know, but...
As long as you have one.
Can I interject for a minute?
Okay.
Anne Thurl, I took issue. At the fourth meeting last night, we were actually talking about electric...
Anne, could you do me a favor? Could you step up to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sure. Excuse me. Just because it came up before, maybe the other night. We were talking about putting in electric vehicle charging stations, and the proposed areas would be Town Hall, Hope Street Parking Lot, Methodist Street Parking Lot, and the Flanders Elementary School by the recreational facilities.
Okay.
So those are, I guess, trial ones are gonna try to go forward with...
Right, so, and also, I understand that, you know, this is a future thing that's going to be happening, so, I mean, there is other projects in town which are gonna have charging stations as well. So what we're doing is, we're basically just asking the client if they're making provisions for the future.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to just put that in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I had one final quick question. Maybe I missed it, but the existing house out by the road, you said there's gonna be no change to it. But what is the use? Is that gonna be remaining? Is that a single-family residence, and will it be that forever, or?
As it is occupied now, it is a single-family house. It will remain as a single-family house, per this application. That's the limit of my knowledge.
No, it has to become part of this SUV. It's part of the CA development. It has to be occupied by age-restricted. We discussed this at staff level. You guys, a tenant, I'm understanding, compared to home, that it's upstairs for a year or either a couple of years. In our discussions, it will be occupied by a age-restricted person. Otherwise, we've gotta cut it out on a separate lot. In order to be a single-family, it has to not be part of this development. So what we concluded is, we wanted a mishap, and if it's satisfied, you know, staff will have to monitor, make sure it happens, and it has to happen in a reasonable amount of time, in my opinion. Your choice has to come in, and I want to be clear, so that you understand that.
Right, well, it's my understanding that. So this building is currently occupied, and so, you know, they're under lease, or whichever, and now that new owners will take over said lease. And if it's just like anything else, if this tenant does remove themselves from said property, then they'd have to meet their age restrictions at that time.
And it's also one of the same parcels, around the elderly housing, CA zone.
It falls into that category.
Second parcel, which we talked about, you know, ground to ground, it did seem to be the best result, also preserves the building. And if it's part of the building, you can't, you know, five years from now, it's had to be moved, because of progress, they're out the back view.
Thank you, Ms. Mahal.
Essentially, upon her vacancy, the next inhabitant, it is age-restricted.
Correct.
So it's really an 18-unit.
For 10 years, so that's something that could happen unless, you know, we're paying attention to that. So, you know, that's kinda where we're at.
But essentially, another, basically, a family of, say, like, eight kids is not going to be able to move in there as a new tenant in the future. I guess that's what we're getting at right there.
It's part of the CA development.
Right, okay.
However, kids are not excluded from living here. It's a one, I believe, just to, just to be, so I'm clear, one occupant has to be 55 and older. There's no exclusion for...
Right, that's what the code is.
And I did, that's not my creation, but...
That's what the code is. Typically, we're getting two people who are typically over that age, when they're...
Correct.
Not always. Many of our developments, I don't really think I have interest in many of our developments.
And they're only two-bedroom, for the most part.
There are grandkids that come and stay for a couple of weeks.
Right.
Correct.
Most of these associations are association rules, which I don't think we've got a copy of any of the association work we're doing.
There is no, it's, yeah, there is no association, because there are, there are no members of any, there's no condo members, because it's an apartment complex, or a apartment community. There's no...
We do pay attention to that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mahal.
We monitor these. We do go through them.
Ms. Thurl, you had a question?
Oh, I just had one last question. It said you're not putting fire sprinklers in. Is there a reason for that, or?
The reason for that, you would have to direct towards Peter Springsteen. Yeah.
So, this project is what they call a multi-single-family, so each unit is essentially a single-family unit. In the building code, sprinklers are not required for multi-single-family. They are required for multifamily. So if we had a building with units that weren't fire-separated by firewalls, then we would have to do sprinklers. So it's not required in building code.
Plus, you're adding a hydrant, I read, right?
Yes.
I'm saying, you saw...
I've heard you on the building code sprinklers. An interesting question is, when we asked that about staff, we knew this is just part of the conversation in general, where we want to be easy.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. My question is, is that in the application, it states that there's 17 total units, when in fact, there's 18. So in order for us to pass, or to have this accurate, like Mr. Mahal has explained to us tonight, that whatever's written on here is what we have to go by. So it says there's 17 total units, when in fact, there's 18.
There are 17 proposed new construction units, that's correct. There's one existing single-family structure residence on site, but there are 17 proposed units of new construction proposed here.
Right, but that, that, there's 18 total units. I know it's just words, but I think I would feel, Terry?
I, I'm listening, yes.
Comfortable, because if we leave it at 17, and I can do something else with that Victorian building, and then we're stuck.
I do believe, actually, Anne and I were just discussing that, too, where we could modify the motion to include, per say, 17 total new units.
All right, plus one existing.
Plus one existing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We're good?
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry, one more. I meant to ask it before. So the property lines, where the proposed units are, they directly abut the property owned by the cemetery, correct? There's nobody that owns in between any of that?
There's a Dollar General roughly here.
Right.
You know, the new Dollar General.
Yeah.
It's on this, it's almost a perfect square here, yeah, right there.
You can see it on there.
Right, but the lines go right from the cemetery to the new project with that, so there's nothing in between there. That's open property. Okay, okay, that's it.
This is a field here.
Okay.
And then there's a depression here.
Yeah.
This is what it means to, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Anne, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Dwyer, you're good?
I'm good.
Terry, you good?
I'm good. There we go, I'm good.
I'm sorry. Terry's usually there. With that being said, do we have any public comments, either for or against proposal on 138 Boston Post Road?
Neutral.
I'm sorry? Or neutral?
Any comments, period.
Any comments, period, from the public? No? With that moving on, I will take a motion.
Mr. Donovan, could I just add one thing, please?
Sure.
So in the application, it, I think it kind of clarifies. It says three proposed elderly 55-plus housing apartment buildings, parentheses, 17 total units, and that's under the proposed section, with three covered detached garage buildings and associated improvements. And then it does also list the existing single-family Victorian house on the property will remain. So we have 17 proposed, plus one existing. I think the only clarification there is what we just talked about, that that existing single-family Victorian house becomes part of one of the CA units and remains as one of the CA units.
Thank you, Ms. Ren. I think it was more for clarification on our side of it?
Yes.
To be honest?
Okay.
And there's only two that are ADA compliant units, just two out of the 17?
There are two accessible units. There is one, the very first unit on your right as you approach, and you'll see there's an ADA accessible parking space directly across the street with a crosswalk up to the sidewalk. And then the last building, the third building, the one furthest to the south, the first building on, the first unit on the right is ADA accessible. The grade falls off a little bit towards the south, so the first units, it makes sense, because they're the flattest, they're closest to the grade as the grade falls away. So there's no step into that unit. And right directly across the street, you'll see another ADA spot with a crosswalk... And right directly across the street, you'll see another ADA spot with a crosswalk directly to that unit.
Okay.
And also, in your application, as you said, it says the existing single-family Victorian house on the property will remain. However, it does not say that it will become an age restricted.
That's why I said that's the only piece that we need to clarify. But I think in the application, it said 17 proposed, plus the one existing. So there's 18. Nowhere it says 18, but 17 plus one existing. It just needs to be clarified that that one will become a CA unit.
I think the record's pretty clear that that's, that's gonna happen. If there's a problem later on, the record's pretty clear, and then maybe use that record to ensure that that happens.
Thank you, Ms. Mahalan. No, I'll. You most certainly may just, you can step right up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Terry Calvin. I'm the president of Eastland Cemetery Association. We've been having great conversation with the folks about developing the property. The cemetery does feel very strongly about preserving the integrity of the property. A lot of vegetation is coming down, tree lines are coming down. And we are having discussions, and that's all been going very well. But it is very important to the cemetery that we maintain that sort, that integrity and that, and that the aesthetics. The property is becoming increasingly sterile with a Dollar General on one side and a dentist office on another side, and now we're losing a whole tree line. I really hope that this is something, we are in talks, and it seems to be agreeable. But it is very important for the cemetery to be on board as far as making, keeping that peaceful aesthetic appearance as we move forward with discussions and approvals.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing. Do you have any changes to the landscape planning line, exterior, internal property line? May need to come back and provide that. At least the staff will, so we can make sure it's still in the code. So, Joe, when you finish your, like, issue, let's be, as a.
Correct. And I think you've heard this evening that along the south side, that fence will return and run that entire south side. I think there was some still open discussion along the east side, along the backs of the graces on the Taylor side where there is some, some trees. But we do have the fence with landscaping on both the west and south side.
All right, so, Ms. Mahalan, it's my understanding then, this temporary grass, this temporary easement that they have, so, and they're in discussion with the Cemetery Association. So there is a possibility of adding a tree line, quote unquote. Is that my understanding of what?
Yeah, that's kind of.
Or some planted material.
There's a preference that you agree, and there's plating on a fence for trees, that kind of thing. I need to, like.
Or both.
Like that, or both. So that's what I'm asking, and do I can show as well, whether it's how deep that, and I need to come back and, and I've let you guys anyways agree with that, that this is part of this project. Whether it's a week or a month. So, it'd be probably during the, the half of a month, pounds or whatever, it's our obligation.
I, I do sort of agree with what was just said in terms of, you know, the tranquility and all that stuff. So, if a tree line could be reestablished, I mean, that would be awesome. Just saying.
Can I just, we've talked about the staff also. Moving forward, Joe, we're talking, you mean, can we agree?
Yes, the Cemetery Association.
Can I do you a favor? Can you do me a favor, please?
Sure.
Speak into the microphone. Thank you.
And you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. But what we've been directed to do is that temporary grading easement area is just to seat it and just have grass there, correct? You don't want grasses and bushes on that slope?
Not in the first being graded, we're talking about the property board.
Right, just the property board. I just wanted to clarify that that large area that's to be graded is just going to be grass. And then the border, the border trees and landscaping. So just to be clear with that.
So there is a possibility to where, discussion amongst the owners and the Cemetery Associations, to where a property line could be established.
Yes. And there's, they do have a signed letter from the Cemetery Association.
I understand that. No, I understand that. I'm just saying.
We can submit that letter to the record if you'd like it. Ms. Kavanaugh signed the letter. And it's just that they're working together, and there's an agreement in place, and.
I don't think we did, Chairman, I mean, what I'm thinking is, we want to see what we're gonna put up.
Understand.
Because we're on site, and that's under construction. I want to make sure that.
Sure.
I think to clarify your question, as proposed, there's a, there's a fence here from.
I understand.
That, so, there's a, yeah, fence all the way down. The only deviation from that will be, is there a fence plus trees, evergreens, on the cemetery side? Or will there not be? That's the only, the fence is, you know, that we're required to have a fence. Okay.
Because, I mean, you know, in terms of, you know, even though cemeteries are beautiful and all that stuff, if somebody's upstairs looking out their window, do they want to look down at it? Or can they look at some beautiful trees? I mean, it's, it's not made just as a suggestion.
And that's what we're.
Correct. And that's why I asked.
Working towards, yep.
Understandable.
Yep.
All right. What is your estimated completion time? Or start time? In all honesty, because materials are really tough to get.
Yeah.
Especially meter sockets.
The, start time is a moving target based on, obviously, you know, a lot of factors. This is this first step. So it's hard to plan without your input, to be honest.
Love to break ground this fall.
That's, the intent is to break ground as soon as possible. Yeah. Yep.
And obviously, there's gonna be silt fence around everywhere and all that. That'd be where you think. Yep.
Yeah, whatever Joe drew on there, we will do. Yes, that's all I, I can speculate beyond that. Yeah.
Hey, Ms. Redd?
Thank you.
Everyone good? Ms. Jeff? Harris?
I'm, I'm having an issue with the wording, Terry. Could you help me with it, please? With the Victorian house. I am, I'm.
Should we close the hearing?
I, I want, are we gonna clarify that?
In the motion that we have from Mr. Mahalan, we will clarify that.
Okay.
When the motion is proposed.
Thank you.
At a regular meeting.
Thank you for helping me with that.
You're welcome.
I move we close the hearing.
Thank you. That was my next question. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, against. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Schmidt will remain seated for Mr. Peck moving into the regular meeting of the application of 138 PPR LLC for a special permit under section 8.2.8, elderly housing in the CA for three apartment units of elderly housing 55-plus, or age restricted, as it is so-called. 17 total units with three covered detached garage buildings and associated improvements at property located at 138 Boston Post Road. Eastline Assessors map, 31.1, lot 7. Is it 38, or is it 138? It is 138. It is a typo, yeah, thank you. I was just making sure. Thank you. Okay. What's going on? Discussions for us?
I voiced my discussion about the, my, you already said it, so you know how I feel about that. I feel as Mr. Dwyer does about the color scheme. And we, I still have concerns about the siding. That's all.
Mr. Dwyer, any comments?
I still don't think, to me, it still looks like a motel. But I'm not gonna vote against it.
Understand. Ms. Thurl?
I think there's a definite need for the housing, and I think people will appreciate it, especially if there's sidewalks up to the stores. I've already had people call me asking where they call for, is there a sign-up list for apartments? So I think it's gonna be rented very quickly. I personally wish the architecture tied in more to the Victorian house, but you can't see them from the road, so I wouldn't vote against it for that. Anyway, I, you know, I think it's great you're putting housing in.
Apartments, yes.
Apartments, yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I have no issues with it. You know, like you say, the architecture, the design, and the color is very subjective, and to each his own. Some like it, some won't. That's always gonna be the case. I do share the concern. I just want to make sure that the language covers the existing single-family house.
Let me do that.
The single-family usage, yes.
Myself, I agree with you guys in terms of the architecture styles and stuff like that. But as you know, we are working on regulations for that district. Myself, I'm not a big fan of vinyl siding, but it is what it is. Go on from there. Other than that, again, like I said, I think it's great. I think it's great that it's a sidewalk going all the way up to the street. I'm a big advocate for sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, I, before I should kind of move on, but I just wanted to have this information.
Speak up for me, please.
They're gonna build their sidewalk. The town is talking about their, seriously, extending the sidewalk down to the farms.
Well, that's great.
I know the state made, made, not precautions.
So that's in the works.
Yeah, the state already did. Thank you, preparations. Thank you. That's the word I'm looking for. With that, myself, I, I really don't have any other issues other than that, you know, I will say that when we do get the motion from one of our members, that we do put in that amended part to include, you know, the 17 new units with the existing Victorian, which will become part of the age-restricted application. Elder, I hate elderly housing. Elderly housing, I know. It's the code. Of the elderly housing. Yeah, I'm 55. I just turned 55. So that it would be, yeah, so that, yeah.
And I live at a 55-overs.
All right, so, I mean, that, that's basically my comment. So as long as we, you know, amend the motion to include those words.
Can we just say it's contingent upon never tearing that Victorian structure and barn down?
Has that been discussed, Mr. Mahalan, in terms of saving that? Because the other beautiful building did come down, which is now the Dollar General.
They addressed that in the beginning, yeah.
So we're doing the motion, 17 new units with the existing, uh, single-family unit, that has to be incorporated as an age-restricted unit. You want to put a deadline on as a condition? I think we could do that.
I think.
Because if the porch rots, you know, does the building come down?
If they have to maintain all of these, it's, we're told that if, if they maintain everything, it's being maintained. Actually, the second one's.
But if we say with the building, it's not saying it can never be torn down. It's saying we're building it with it now.
I mean, at some point, the whole thing's gonna get torn down. We'll be wanting to end it. It's going to go. It's part of the senior housing project. On the, in order to tear it down, we need a demo. Anyone's not the issue. I think the issue is how long will it remain, so we can, no one will be able to, and I want to be clear, you understand, you understood that.
But if they maintain it, it should stay, it would be okay.
It will be maintained.
Yeah.
Prior to the development, and if they want to tear it down and have a new building, they're driving back to you. Going to a building, and go to building, which is for demo, for any building in town. We don't have a star provision. We don't have a star for profits. What we see one case, we're one, we're one, we're one, zero. And it has a lot of.
Which is a good aspect.
It's a great, we, we did talk about that. I've, I've been, they agreed to do that, and so I'm sure that it's not staying down after 10 years. And that's my concern. And so we talked about that, and I think the, I understood the lease was on June.
Right, so right now, it's, it's not a long-term lease that's in, occupied the building right now.
We talked about, talking about it. We didn't, you know, we were talking about two years, four years. We weren't sure, you know, what, what the limit should be.
You can condition your agreement if you choose to. That is your prerogative.
So we don't know what the lease is now at that current building? I mean, it's not a long-term lease? Or we don't know?
No, I know, because she's my tenant. It's not long-term. No, it's not a 10-year lease, no. It's not a 5-year lease. I'd have to look beyond that, but. I mean, I'm okay with you asking me, for my opinion, which you're not, but I'm happy to share.
All right, no, we'll carry on.
Okay.
Are you happy with that answer? I mean, it's up to us. We could put in a condition if, if we choose to. Myself, I, I would trust Mr. Mahalan, Mr. Cordo will get that worked out.
I would like to put it in, as a condition.
In terms of saying how.
Saving it, saving the house? I don't know. Anne, help me with the.
We, she has it written down here to which will incorporate the house must become part of the elderly housing project.
What he's talking about is whether you make it age-restricted immediately or after the current tenant leaves.
Okay, what about the part about tearing it down? As Anne said before, like, is there something?
It has to be maintained.
It has to maintain as part of the development. The real question here is, do you put a condition on it saying it has to be included with an age-restricted tenant within a certain time?
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, no, I don't have an issue with that. I think what Anne was getting at in terms of, you know, preserving the building. And with this building being part of said application, in terms of where it's gotta meet the regulations of said application area, that this building in itself will be preserved and must be preserved to meet the application.
I think what you're doing is saying 17 new units with one existing unit, a paper total of 18 units. It's included. It's part of the development.
Correct. Which means it would have to be maintained, I guess, is what we're getting at, to preserve this structure. Okay?
Just through staff, since this is a special permit.
This is our.
That's why I said through staff, but.
Okay. You may speak with Mr. Mahalan.
Any change that we need to be modifications to the whole application?
Which means you will see us again. Are you happy with that? You good with that?
I'm very good, thank you.
Okay, so that, that building will become part of the application, which means that it must be maintained.
Okay.
So now, do you have the wording worked out?
Not, not really. We can try it here.
Okay, with that, I will ask for a motion. We're gonna go for this. See, now, we have to amend it. We all have scribbles going down. So with that, I will ask for a motion on said application.
I move to approve the application of 138 Boston Post Road LLC for a special permit under section 8.2.8 elderly housing CA for three apartment units of elderly housing 55-plus, 17 total new construction units with three covered detached garage buildings along with the existing Victorian home and barn and associated improvements at property located at 38 Boston Post Road, Eastline Assessors map, 31.1, lot 7.
That covers it all?
I think so.
No.
138.
138, yeah.
Sorry, yeah, we have a typo there.
138, 17 units for a motion, 17.
New construction.
New construction, plus one. New construction plus one.
And one existing single family unit for a total of eighteen.
And then-
Yeah. Okay, amended as such.
So it will be, what she just said, so it would be a total of seventeen
New.
New construction units with one existing unit.
Existing single family.
Single family.
Unit for a total of eighteen.
With three covered detached garage.
Yeah.
Ms. Bing, after you get it written down, would you be able to read it back to us, please? Thank you so much.
That's all I'll ask. I'm going to just bear with us for a minute there. So you get that.
While she's doing that, I'd just like to say, if I could, I'm really happy that they're using native plants.
That they what?
That they're using native plants.
Oh, yes.
Very pleased with that.
And a lot of them, too.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm glad there's a sidewalk.
Yeah, I know you are. You have a sidewalk, yes.
Something for everyone.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Um, I move to approve the application of one thirty-eight Boston Post Road LLC for a special permit under section eight point two point eight elderly housing CA for three apartment units of elderly housing, fifty-five plus, um, seventeen total units.
New construction units.
Thirty-five plus new construction units for a total of seventeen units with three covered detached garage buildings, one existing single family unit with barn for a total of eighteen elderly housing units and associated improvements at property located at elderly House Post Road East Line Assessor's Map, thirty-one twenty-one lot seven.
You good with that, or I can?
I'm good with that.
Alright.
I think you're good.
Give me a second.
Yeah, no, I know. Yep. So we're good. We got all eighteen units in there, basically, for the quote-unquote. With that being said, I will take a second on said motion.
I second it.
Mr. Schmidt, got the second.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Mr. Schmidt. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats to you all.
Thank you.
Alright. Having said that, I'd like to welcome Mr. Peck back up, please. No, you second.
Well, that's right, I'm for Terry.
You're good. Okay. Carrying on. Wow, this is totally messed up. Moving on for the, the approval of minutes of July seventh, two thousand twenty-two. I do have one note on there. Right up at the very top, also present, we need to add Mr. Mulholland. Other than that, I had no issue with it. Good?
No, he was.
No, he was. You're good? One else is good?
I'm good.
With that, I'll take a motion. To approve or deny minutes?
Second.
Making Mr. Schmidt and Debbie? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Minutes carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Mulholland. The old business, we have none, new business. Any business on the floor, if any majority of the vote of the commission?
Could I just bring one thing up?
You may.
I know Old Lime is contemplating asking for those electrical charges and all their, like, new commercial buildings. Is that something we want to put in our regulations or talk about at least?
Well, I think, actually, we just heard from Ms. Chikalo about how they're going to do that on a temporary thing. I mean, it-
But I mean, as a regulation for new construction, do we ever want a-
Excuse me, could you shut that door for me, please?
Yeah, I read the same thing.
Sorry, but I, I can't listen to two-
Than thirty parking spots.
Anything more than thirty parking spots?
They're contemplating adding that. They must install charging stations.
Right, correct. But I think what, what Ms. Thurlow is saying, I mean, is it something to where we should put into our regulations to add it? Mr. Mulholland, you may want to listen to this. Please step up. What is being asked is if we want to, as a commission, add to where electrical charging stations should or should not be added to our regulations on, say, projects over a certain amount of-
We're doing a commercial, we're starting to ask that of staff, but I would love to look into the legality of doing that, make sure we can do that.
Okay.
Um, you know, something that would probably be hard to do. Um, there's a lot of controversy about electric vehicles, the state or city, depending on where you sit. Um, the charging stations, our request, and I mean, somebody who drove a new Mustang, electric car from Florida, Massachusetts. It's all, and I mean, tell me how you did that. Fifty-one miles, you had to stop for like a couple hours. And then start again, so you lost the day, but that's what it takes, but-
It is, but I mean, it is the wave of the future.
Charging stations is a problem, and as more get developed, it will become better for everybody. But we're already talking about that, how it's going to put a couple in.
Correct. And we have an application that is adding a couple themselves, correct?
I have a couple of them in development. Um, we're hoping to do such kinds of things, and if we get future things, like if there's a more gateway, maybe we can start encourage them to add them. Um, and I think you're going to see places, uh, you know, across the, add them in there when they're on more, you know, as an add, and you're starting to see that spread. But it's a very good point, let me check in, I want to make sure our neighborhood legislation allows us to adapt that. You know, sometimes we have these good ideas, but we may not have the legal authority to do it. I want to make sure we don't make any of those illegal mistakes.
They have them in Waterford at the, uh, the little mall, across from the Crystal Mall. They have a station there.
Okay, moving, I'll move on to Mr. Mulholland, please.
Busy, I'm dealing with, with, um, the project downtown, let me come, come before you, and I may not, um, see the developer's files that they're down, and I don't, um, hard to tell at this stage. Um, it's a New York developer's sounding us through large development, which I don't know that it'll ever get this far. Um, it's not, um, the reality at this point.
It's a vision, per se.
Yeah, I mean, they're pushing, but it's, it's, uh, it might be not something this group, we want to entertain or die. So we'll see where it goes. I'm going to be careful what I say. We're busy, we're slowing down, we're in stress rates, we're starting to have people already starting to pull, pull back. But we've been very busy down the stairs.
I have a question for you. Terry likes sidewalks, I like fences. So any more work?
Both.
Any, any update on the fence yet for the, uh, Amtrak? Do we have an update with them?
I can actually answer that for you, because it is, um, to my understanding, that it was discussed with the first selectman, and they sort of put it on hold to do some more investigating on a possible new design to the fence, going from that aspect, so they did put it on hold.
Okay.
And then I'm sure they'll come back and we'll hear more about it.
Well, the fence that looks there now, I see it from my boat, and I got to say, it, it looks fantastic, and you can see through it. I'm just making a personal observation, but-
There's, there's, um-
Personally, I had no problem with the other design, you know, because if you're driving, you shouldn't be looking out at the water.
Right, right.
Legally, legally, is there anything we can do? I don't think there is.
Yes.
No, it's more so of the Amtrak working well together with the town, so.
And then there's a theory put out by your zoning guy, that Amtrak is a private agency.
They can do whatever they want.
Therefore, there's such a dark protection review, we have jurisdiction.
Let me ask you this.
Everybody agrees with that word yet, but I threw it out.
But the one that's over there, not the new one, it look, it does look nice. The black one, the black one, that's-
On the board walks on.
Yes.
That's not the one.
The one Amtrak proposes is very similar to that, but-
But it has the curved top.
The curved top feels like a shepherd's staff. They have it up in Nolik, it's in, uh, in-
Yeah, I went to go look at it when you delivered it.
Yeah, it's nice.
You know, I have people that like it, other people don't like it, but that's architecture.
Let me ask you this. Speaking of architecture, I know that we set up the CA Subcommittee last commission.
I would rather sit on my desk and do some-
You do.
When we're, uh, trying to get to it again, we're that busy.
I understand, because tonight was a good, yes.
Pass that down if anybody wants to see it.
I think Debbie saw that.
You know, we shared-
Yeah, I went there to see it. I liked it. Thank you, Dave. Yeah.
On this application, I mean, we-
This is where it could have came into effect.
We spent a lot of weeks on this.
Yeah.
Policy was being up, and I mean, the week that I found it. Three or four of our engineers myself, and, uh, we weren't done until nine o'clock.
Well, I think that you and your department did an excellent job with this. Thank you so much.
But I mean, as these things go.
Except for my cheat sheet. Things are out of order.
Yeah, I saw that too, mine too, that I had directly, she stole.
That's okay. That's alright.
These things can be difficult to deal with.
I think that's what they're going to do. Too many suicides.
Landscape plan, all those types of things, I would put out the city agreement on landscape.
He was, he was very good.
He was good.
He know, you know why? Because he sits on a commission himself. I think he knows.
Yeah.
It's always with these applications, the principal's always worried about his budget.
Gotcha.
I think that's where the siding part comes into it.
Yeah, I remember siding right now is not our purview, but we have an interest.
Just a comment.
A comment.
Yeah.
We might have an interest. Do I do the same thing at staff level? I'm not a violent man, but with that said, in the commercial application, a lot of-
Well, they make a lot of different sidings nowadays.
Yes, they do. You know, we look, I try to, when I look at these things, the vision is, well, if I lived there, how would it live? Would I like it? You know, what are the amenities, what are they not? If I brought my back door, what do I want to do? I want to sit in a chair, read a paper, maybe grill out? Maybe not, but is it convenient? Or is my neighbor on top of me, do I have any pride? So all those kind of things, you know, what are the plans? Where are they going to be? How does it look? And this board, to much of your credit, has picked up those cues and clues, and you're starting to look at those things in the general discussion. And, you know, as we get into aesthetics in the village, I think we may need to consider, are they still learning, or do we do architecture review?
Okay.
Yeah.
But-
Now, with that, with that being said, I know you and I have talked about progress on, on such projects here in town. Can you fill the commission in on, say, like, you know, the Norton?
Norton's moving along. Um, they're in the third floor, they're ready almost to paint. The second floor, they're, they're at, uh, electrical plumbing and ready to insulate and then shoot up. First floor, they're putting in walls now. Uh, they're moving very quickly. They want to be open, the forces that can-
And I see Five Churches got their sign up, so.
Yeah, uh, they're working inside the Norton House. Uh, they actually put in a new footing, hand dug, and it's got to be six feet deep and two feet wide and thirty-five feet long.
God bless them.
That costs quarters, total rebar. So they're working on the inside. You can't see it because if you're outside them, unless you go in.
Oh, I can see it.
A lot of our new kitchen.
Yeah.
They're going, they're moving along. They want to be open to-
Is that a chain, or is it an individual?
No, he owns a place in New Britain called Five Churches.
Brewery.
And you can go online and look at it, and see the interior, and see the pictures, it's kind of brewery.
People are making fun of the name, though.
It's been around for a long time, actually.
Yeah, and the reason it's Five Churches, because up in New Britain, it's about Five Churches.
Yeah.
And so he's carrying that, now that's his business name.
Correct.
They say they put all new windows in, they open like garage doors.
Yeah.
They do. They're already in.
Okay, with, with that being said, let me ask you a question. Um, so the demolition has started out in Flanders, you know, and-
Yes.
You know, they are tearing down a gas station, and it's come to my attention that, I, I guess there was some sort of issue with tanks in that area before. Is that true?
Yes.
Alright, is it something to where we should have a witness in terms of soil testing and all that, or are we gonna?
That's not our purview.
Okay, just asking.
We had two leeches up in that area.
Yes, across the street where Starbucks is.
Right.
In nineteen-
A long time ago.
Ninety?
Right, but it is our aquifer.
Yes.
That's my biggest concern.
Nineteen ninety, we bought it, so companies came in, did a lab testing, there was a little migration across the street. The tanks they're going to be removing once they dig them up are relatively new. I don't think they're at the end of their life cycle. Um, but the state's got to worry about that enough.
But it is on our aquifer, correct?
Don't we have to make sure they do it?
But DEP, why is that? It's their program.
Yep, yeah, understood, yeah.
This is not of our purview.
Okay.
Yes, we should be generally paying attention.
Again, like I say, it's not that we want to, you know, like, be there and do it, just like-
I talked to the demo guy, I'm trying to get on the law once, and he barely hung up.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
It's a tough crowd, those demo guys.
Understood.
And a new car wash is coming.
And a new car wash is coming, and he's starting to fall, I think, if I'm thinking.
Well, I do think that somebody in the town should keep an eye on them and make sure they are taking up the tanks.
Building official will be out there, fire marshal will scoot by, I go by. We're kind of paying attention, we stand in different jurisdictions, but we're paying attention. And it's not something we don't look at. We go by all of these things.
I was going to say.
Is it seventy-five cars that's just moving along? They're now making some, they're making some way now, and they're moving on pretty well.
Who is that, I'm sorry?
They're making headway.
No, who was? I'm sorry.
Is it seventy-five group?
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
That's, that's going along pretty well, and they're very dependent to the southern orange and coast stuff and all the things we want in the range. Our new town agent is near, and he's pretty good, he can do that job. We check the map anyway, if possible, if it's wrong, we may correct the map, so we got a guy that checks the map, which is good.
That's Alex, right?
Yes.
Alex is very good.
Yeah, he's very competent, he checks the map.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mulholland.
You're welcome.
Uh, comments from the ex-officio. I would invite Ms. Anne Chikalo, if you would like to step up there, if you don't mind. Sorry about the tripod there.
Give me a sec. Okay. Um, Anne Chikalo, from the Board of Finance. I'm sitting here for Roseanne Hardy. What'd you say?
You said Board of Finance.
Oh, sorry, Board of Selectmen.
I know you were there for you, understandable.
I'm sitting here for Roseanne Hardy. Um, we send her heartfelt condolences to her on the passing of her husband. Going forward, um, we were talking about the electric vehicle ports and, hold on, let me just grab my paper here. Alex Close, um, the engineer, did give us a presentation last night to the Board of Selectmen. And, um, regarding that, they're putting in some trial ones, as I stated before, and, let me see, where is it? They have level two chargers and level three chargers. So a level two charger basically would take three to eight hours for a full charge, where the level, uh, let me see, level three charger would take a half hour to an hour for a full charge. So I thought that was, um, interesting.
That's a big difference.
It is, exactly. So it depends what kind of charge that they're, they're going to put in.
Yeah, it's all basically a monetary thing, you're going to think.
Yeah.
How much can the grid sustain if you put too many of them in?
Yeah.
That's true, too, exactly. So there is an incentive from Eversource that there's going to be a rebate back to pay back the town to put in these, um, these ports. So that, that's what the presentation was basically about. The only other thing I think that is about the Amtrak fence, it's my understanding that Amtrak is going to be moving forward in the fall on that, and that they will not put up the fence without the approval of Eastline, that they're going to get our approval. So that's a good thing. Additionally, um, this week I was involved in interviewing, um, a candidate for the position of Finance Director. Anna Johnson will be leaving, so we're in, in the throes of doing that. Um, also, um, they are also in, um, hiring a new parking rec- director because Dave Putnam will be leaving. So that's pretty much it from the Board of Selectmen. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Sure.
Regarding the fence, did we do anything that I do? Is that the Board of Selectmen, is it a referendum, is it?
I don't think it's a referendum. I think it's, I think it's the Board of Selectmen. I think it's-
So it's still a subjective question, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, that, this is what I was told from, you know, the first selectman. So I, I don't know if it's actually going to end up just being his approval, or whether it's actually going to be the board. I'm not sure.
I'm sure I have links with some close and very sophisticated developers, uh, from, from upscale committees, and they, if we do chain link, they may be out there.
Okay, well, that is something that will be decided when the time comes, I'm sure.
Well, I mean, that's good to know.
We could talk about it all night long, yeah, yeah. Ms. Jen, you had a question?
I do. Um, was there any conversation about the coyote situation last night?
Yes, so there was. The, um, there was a DEEP meeting, I think it was-
Last Thursday.
July twenty-eighth, the Thursday, and it was canceled because the presenter had gotten COVID.
It's rescheduled.
Is it rescheduled?
Yeah, for the eleventh.
The eleventh? Oh, good to know.
I think what Debbie's getting at is that-
Yeah, so then, I, I'm getting there. So, um, what happened was, I guess there was some, um, hullabaloo on, on Facebook saying that there was a, somebody had, like, poisoned a coyote. Um, and so I guess the investigator went out there, I think it was from DEEP, and what first selectman said was that the, I guess, one coyote did die. However, um, the person who was putting it up on, um, Facebook said that she just smelt the other coyotes. So there was really no proof. So at this point, it's still under investigation. So that's kind of what was-
So, yeah, the whole incident is under investigation, to my understanding.
Basically, that's, that's, yeah, it's under investigation.
And we all know how social media does go, so.
Yeah.
It's all true, every word.
Oh, you betcha.
It's the devil, it's the red devil.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, um,
Yep.
I think there's, you know, there's dens in different places that people know about, and it's, you know, coyotes are out.
There is, yeah.
So, I think that's it.
But it is clear that they rescheduled, you know, the meeting for the eleventh to where DEEP can come into the concerned residents, which I'm sure- which I'm sure are going to be a lot, because it's not just coyotes, it's bobcats, it's the bears, and Mahal and all that.
Yeah, exactly. It's, you know, and I know it's a big issue.
When they finish eating all the squirrels and small critters, they'll leave.
Right.
Exactly. Any other questions?
I think we're good. Thank you, Ms. Chikalo. I said Ann Chikalo. No, I know, I know. Thank you. All right, moving on. Comments from the zoning board liaison on the planning commission. Mr. Peck? You awake?
I did go. Thought I took some notes. Let's see. May I deliver this next time?
You may.
I took notes, I was there.
And you forgot to bring them.
There was a subdivision that was approved, a very small one, and they did use the Conservation by Design Development Regulation, even though it was less than four units, I think it was only three units. And it would work to their advantage, those regs, by going, even though it was only three. Other than that, I don't recall anything too significant.
So basically, I think that's probably the reported itself, or do you want to readdress it? I'll check the notes. Okay, I'll check back with you next time. But I'm comfortable with that. Thank you, Mr. Peck. Next up is Mr. Schmidt on August 9th.
Yep.
Got that?
I got it.
Okay. You're not going to be on your boat?
I can't guarantee that.
All right. Comments from the chairman, myself, as you heard Ms. Chikalo say, I'm sure most of we know that Roseanne's husband did pass away. I know I can speak for the commission, that we can pass along our condolences to Roseanne and her family. Do you know that all the services are private? And that's why Ann is here tonight, because she is up in Maine doing the ceremonies, I guess, as you may say.
I found my notebook.
Ah. Let's go back to Mr. Peck.
July 12th. They had an affordable housing consultant made a presentation. Let's see, a public hearing about Nine Upper Kensington Drive, the CDD design. They'd also discussed a, and approved, a emergency access to Stonywood Drive, which is off of Bush Hill Drive. There's already a right-of-way there that was done back in the 60s. So they're going to connect that for an emergency exit to help case the Patagonia River floods, where Bush Hill goes into Patagonia. They'll have another way out by way of Remagna Road.
So it's very similar to what they did to Giant Snack, where they put the gate in to get out from Rocky Back, something like that.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Karen and myself, other than that, you know, so we do pass along our condolences to Roseanne. Other than that, I hope everyone loves the humidity, because I know I don't. I know Celebrating Eastline was phenomenal, but other than that, I have nothing further, other than to wish everybody to stay cool the next week, so going on. Take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Sure, take a second.